Anyone have any questions on the budget? This is a public meeting for the budget. Yeah, she in the back.
All right.
I did. Do I have to do anything other than bang and call the meeting order? Don't we have to hold it for fifteen minutes?
You don't have to hold it until, you can hold it until there's comment or be no comment, and then you can close it.
Really?
Yeah.
Would you like to talk? Okay.
I think you want to make sure you hold on, pour on here.
Oh, okay. I'll wait till everybody comes in and then we'll close.
I think you wanted to establish a record who was in attendance here and then make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
You basically open it in there. You can't wait until the close of it until somebody has walked in in the next five minutes.
Is that for the sesquicentennial?
Do I have to read any? Can you send me copies of the writing?
Everybody get twenty out and then they'll sell their best stuff.
Is there a bottle?
Oh, that's what's happening in front of the church?
A bottle of bourbon?
It's the ten fifteen over there.
I was totally getting it to go to the dinner. How are the tickets going on now?
They don't go on sale until July.
Dinner?
July third, right? It's served, is it served at the dinner?
No, the dinner, how are the tickets going?
We sold two hundred tickets.
Two hundred.
I mean, we're s-.
We're done.
Oh, you sold out?
No, we wanted to sell three hundred, but we don't have time because we don't have to get another pig, so we cut it off at two hundred.
Smart move.
Well, the pigs are only nine hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
And we sell four.
It's outside in the mess hall on the road right in front of it, so it'd be under ten.
Okay, cool.
Do you have interest in any more tickets? Because the pigs are nine twenty-six. Nine hundred twenty-six bucks.
The what?
The pig.
The pig is?
I guess, from.
Yeah, it is.
Who'd we get it from?
Buckley.
Debbie?
No.
No, I think maybe Cousin or his John or who's John Buckley. Coincidence, maybe?
It's not her.
Is two hundred a good number? Did we, is that good?
Yeah, he said that.
That's twenty tables.
Any extra, any extra.
Twenty tables that count.
You know, anything extra we have, we sell. So I mentioned we've come to sell.
You could sell the pig the next day, too.
Well, if two hundred, a pig's not, one pig isn't that, not gonna feed two hundred people, unless he's just like doing like little tiny.
I don't know.
Oh, that's a full course deal, though.
More than just pigs.
How much does a pig serve?
Well, you get a, I don't know, a big pig that weighs like four hundred pounds, actually only weighs probably two hundred pounds. So then you're talking about maybe a pound of meat apiece.
That's probably enough.
Yeah.
We did a pig at the beach for.
Plus I had seven vegetarian meals.
A wedding. And I just remember sitting there just pouring.
Oh, I ate more than a pound.
Forever, and it, we ate it the whole week.
Yeah, I ate more than a pound.
Seven vegetarian meals, so.
Well, you can leave the veg- veggies on, off of my plate, just give me a full pig.
Give you all meat, give you their meat.
Snout.
Or pound, you want your seven, seven meals.
So, we lost Roger. Okay.
That's something to be.
And then, Joe, can we get a new table over there?
We're measuring it right now.
We're currently measuring a table to get up on a can.
Yeah, we have a tape measure.
We might even want to get another.
You know, guys.
They're gonna mess up where we're at. We gotta start again.
I seem to recall having that conversation authorizing the purchase of two new tables.
Those come after the lapel pins of the city emblem.
It's three, that's thirty-three minutes.
It's around thirty-six inches. It really has a leg that falls off if you try to.
It's about thirty-six inches.
Sam, you're missing a photo off here, buddy. You got the mayor on the ground fixing the table.
Oh, sweet, thanks. Cover, cover that up, cover that up, Sam.
The one leg.
Make sure that's on video. We don't need to see this.
I'm sitting underneath that next time.
Some table's gonna fall away.
They're all different heights, which means that it's.
Probably. Let's wobble now.
We start out at square one.
Two. Three. Four.
That thing's gonna go top one end.
Five. Six, sorry. Six and a half. I didn't keep your fingers, did I? I, I know a good paramedic. But he's just looking at me like I didn't do that all the time. It's thirty-six by seventy-two.
Sam's gonna eat the whole thing.
Thirty-six by seventy-two.
It's gonna be on Facebook later.
Oh, man.
What was it? Thirty-six by seventy-two. Okay, good.
Oh, it is good.
Yeah.
Okay, Al, would you try that?
That's sturdier, yeah.
Yeah, that's all sturdier, thanks.
Good job.
No, I don't think so.
No, actually, it's pretty, no, it's pretty good, actually.
Should I just say, actually?
I think so.
No, probably still, no, probably still order one anyway. Which?
We want one that's different than mine.
No, ours is the same, right? Sorry, ours are the same.
Seventy-two by thirty-six.
Fifty? So.
I said those tables are probably the ones this building.
Oh, they, they have to be original.
They have to blame our house.
What year is this building, sixteen?
I shouldn't assume. I just automatically do.
Well, we did get new chairs.
Right.
We got new carpet. New chairs.
I think what's capitalized on, it doesn't kick out this much sometimes.
Probably, yeah.
Did you see what the city of Cincinnati is voting on?
Beautiful. The other one's way off.
Crosswalks that light up when you hit a button.
Is that right?
It was just on the news. Who is? So he said it was just on the news tonight. Yeah, that's cool.
Is that right?
Exact same ones that's down there at Bruce Morgan.
And they're doing it by the zoo?
They're gonna pull where they want to do it at with them.
Really?
They got a mode on it first to get past, but they said they got all the boats.
Was it, was it, was it a kid hit?
Yeah, yeah, plus the lady who fit was, before Thomas, she got hit up in Northside. Yes, they talked about her, too. Yeah, the lady who owned, uh. The rest kind of got him started to think about unsafe things.
I do really wish it was like.
It's pretty neat.
So now that we have a quorum, I will close the public hearing. Yeah, that part's done.
Have we closed it?
Yeah, six forty.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, no, but I wanted to talk about the. Before we start the meeting, is everybody gonna be here for the fourth? And do you want to walk, ride, that kind of stuff? The cars for? Debbie, Debbie has invited all the previous mayors and city administrators to be part of the parade.
Unless you're telling me something I don't know.
Well, I don't know.
You're soon to be previous administrator. The current should be in it, yeah.
Do you not want to be in the parade?
He looked at me and said, "Previous city administrator," didn't he?
Oh, oh, now I got it.
Sorry.
No. I feel, I figured I'd walk, but I, I ended up walking last year that I really liked, but I don't.
Walking's great.
I mean, we could put a lead car and you could use a car and if you want to be in it at the carnival or something.
But we'll all be together, yeah.
Or a G or whatever.
So you think I just need one this year, not two?
We need a place to put the candy.
Well, we're gonna need, check with Debbie, but we're gonna, I mean, Marion.
They're getting those cars.
Huh?
She's getting those cars.
For those individuals.
Yeah.
Oh, well, then we're okay with that.
I'm just doing.
So, so one vehicle, important pieces on the agenda.
Is everybody gonna be here? You guys gonna be here? You gonna be here? Are you okay walking?
Yeah.
First, should we all walk? But then you got the candy thing, so.
Right, we need to have somebody drive, at least somebody drive the car with candy.
What do we have last year?
We had a G and a pickup truck.
I think you all would look great in police cruisers.
The pickup truck work well.
Ooh, that would be fun.
You can put the kids in the back. We don't, not a, not a.
Not a Ken driving, we just cruised down the road.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
Luckily, we didn't get very far, but, oh my God.
I had all the kids in the back, and he was driving.
Oh, standing up baby. Made it to McDonald's.
My dad was grand, he went, I just turned around and was like, oh my.
They're so bad, they're so bad, but they were so quiet.
It was like speaking in the van.
Hold on, get down.
He's like, oh, he's Trans Am, or he's like, what's wrong? The kids are in the back, he was.
What? Oh, somewhere like that's mine, bro.
That'll work.
He does, he does.
She had to order these and she hates them.
So you got on the cars, you're gonna get one? You gotta talk to Debbie and get one maybe.
The truck, the truck might be, because at the last meeting regarding, it's town kids that walk. He's got a young.
Ashley, Ashley's probably gonna walk with the veterans at the rear, and I was gonna peel off and join in with the Cockburn Avenue or anything. Jack won't even be, he's still in Montana. Sydney should be out there. It'll be just me.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it now.
Right. My kids don't want to do it, so they just try to take, there won't be many kids.
Yeah.
You need more, you think we need more?
Yeah, we should.
Do you get the same amount each year?
We're in the beginning, the kids are all like.
And running up on our streets, down on the avenue, stealing your car, so. That one incident.
Where do you buy the candy? Well, that's a good price. Do you get the same number of rags each year?
I just want an eyeball.
Yeah.
I just will be walking. What did he say? Was he defensive, or was he okay? We need to close the door, guys.
Eric did, you weren't paying attention. One minute till showtime.
He does, I'm glad to talk to him.
Are they still after talking? We can start without them.
And the cheese has addressed it. So I think, I think, yes. Baking out here is trying to look at it.
Actually, I can do a countdown. Fifteen seconds. Ten seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Called the meeting to order. But I'll take my time asking for calling the roll. The meeting is officially called to order. We ca- we do the roll before the plat, right? You can never.
Should I call?
Okay, okay, yeah, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Present.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Kelly, here. Mr. Beasley.
Here.
Mr. Peterman.
Here.
Mr. Slaughter.
Here.
Pledge its flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose standing is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. Okay. Entertain a motion for approval of minutes of the last meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye. Okay, it's time for visitor's communications. Do we have any communications? Visitors want to ask anything? How about you in the back, sir? No. Well, he asked. Um, we are to reports of officers, fire department monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, members of council, Mr. Dill. I really don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was sent out in your packets, but would like to reiterate one point that's in there, refers to hydrant testing. We've been in the process this past month and a half so far of hydrant, the testing our hydrants as we do annually. So just, we put it on the website, let's put it on the website, just to let everybody know, they'll know in the audience hopefully now, if they haven't already seen us out. Again, we have had some, a couple of issues with hydrants, and KWD's been right on Johnny on the spot, fixed them right away, so it's worked out well. The fire on quarter, that hydrant happened to go out of service, they fixed it that night, and we had to fire it the next night. So, again, hand in hand, and we let them know just how good a job that they're doing, we made sure we called them. So, we're doing about, we're doing a little bit more than we did in the past couple of years with the hydrants, because last year we simply painted and marked them, so this year we're testing a few more, but just to let everybody know, we're out there doing that, and we try to make sure the residents are aware of what's going on. Other than that, I'd be glad to field any questions council may have. We're gearing up for two weeks, you know, from tonight, obviously, for the fourth, week of the fourth, so, again, I'd be glad to answer any questions council may have.
Entertain a motion.
Move to receive and file.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye. Police Department Monthly Report, Chief Daley. Okay, Daley did it.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, thank you, council members. I do not have anything new to pass on from the May monthly report. The only thing I just wanted to mention is that Kalen Holland, at the academy, obviously, in the second weekend, he has been named the class leader for his class.
Wow.
That's a huge endorsement and accomplishment on his part, and he'll do a fine job in that leadership.
How big is his size?
Um, normally twenty-five to thirty-two. He'll do a great job. I thought I'd share that with you.
Other, other attendees vote on that?
Well, I, I think it's a little bit of more of the leadership down at Department of Criminal Justice Training. They collectively come together, the staff does, and they actually, you know, you have to apply for it, it's kind of like a resume type thing, you got to put in for it, sell yourself, go through an interview process. Obviously, Kalen's very well spoken, very intelligent, so he'll do really well in that position. And on a, on a good note, we were able to pull off an academy class for Joe Palucci in July, so he will start with us beginning of July, and he'll be leaving us mid-July. So, we'll get him up here in front of council, get him a boost, and send him off on his way also. But that's all I have, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Okay, any questions? Thanks, chief. Entertain a motion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
City administrators report.
I just had a couple of things to really update. The street program is in process, of course, we have approved our contractor, Regler, Lynn Regler, Black Topping is the contractor this year. Of course, they will do the actual resurfacing portion in the fall. Leading into that, we have a very aggressive plan, program this year, as you know, but our crews have been working on sidewalks and spot curb repair. They're finished with Lilac and Diana Court, they're on Highview, which is a very long street, with a lot of elevation issues in the sidewalks, there's significant sidewalk there, it was actually one of the highest rated percentage of sidewalk replacement that we had remaining in the city, largely due to the elevation differences. So we'll be on there for a while, and then they'll move to the issue of curb replacement on Custis and Washington, and that'll put us into the fall with, with a lot of hard work on there. So, and the other portion of that project was also Burnet Ridge, which is independent, but in our capital program this, we did fund this location on Burnet Ridge. Our engineers have done cost analysis and design for the multiple methods, including a pier wall and an actual head wall system that would also potentially include an extension in the precinct of the, the pipe. We're meeting with that property owner tomorrow, actually, to finalize whether we can obtain easement necessary beyond that property to do the extension, which is the preferred method, so we'll report back on that. And then we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for July tenth on the street program. Other than that, we do have, sesquicentennial is upon us, and this is our last meeting before that. The good news is everything seems to be running in place for a lot of great events. If you haven't had the opportunity of reporting it, I think at the last meeting or the meeting prior, that we initiated construction on the Charters of Freedom, and if you go by there, you'll actually see them now, and, and talk about a, a unique project. And a time, timeline, because we're dedicating that on July second. It's been a, an interesting.
July fourth.
Or July fourth, I mean, I'm sorry.
You got two more days.
July fourth, yeah, just added two days. We'll definitely have it done now. I told everyone else we had to have it done by the second.
Good, good.
But it's, it's really, I can tell you this, the people that have worked on it, our crews, we have a bricklayer, all the people that involved in it have just taken to the idea of what it means and what it is, and, and I think that's really cool, and I think that the public will respond the same way. So we are doing that dedication with the veterans and Veterans Way after the parade on the fourth. And obviously, we would like all of council to be there for that dedication. It should be a really neat event for the dedication, and it's, you know, of course, Chris Manning was involved with designing that for the city, and it's a very unique design, in fact, I'll, I'll just share a story, I stopped there with my daughter after hours, and she picked up on the whole Pentagon shape of it right away, and she thought that was really cool, and I just think the public will respond to it that way when they first see it. So we're excited about that, it's, it's progressing well, all the other plans are in place, and there's a lot of really neat events, so hopefully all of council and all of our public can, can be there, so.
When is it again, Ron?
The dedication's on the fourth, after the parade.
Oh, right.
Immediately after the parade. There's veterans that were invited to be in the parade, and they will be actually transported to that location, we'll be dedicating the driveway as Veterans Way at the same time that we're doing the Charters of Freedom dedication.
It's gonna be like a ribbon cutting kind of a thing?
Yeah. And if anybody had any other questions, that's, that's all I am.
All right, thanks, Ron. There's no old business, new business, consideration of VA development agreement.
Okay, you all received a copy, I'm gonna pass this out if everybody could take one. Latest and greatest developments, I've, I mentioned we're kind of, you know, I keep using the term eleventh hour, this, this thing has continued to progress, but I, I would like to highlight some, some changes that were, and did I give away my copy? I did. So we'll share.
Here's, here's.
Okay. You received in advance a copy of the development agreement, this essentially is what we have seen, and you worked within session in a special meeting in the beginning of May, and I indicated at the last meeting that there were a couple of items that we're still running toward in terms of final details, and I, I think we're generally there, and I know Jim Parsons is in attendance this evening representing the developer, and what I would like to share before we get into any of the other details is to just walk you through the changes that I've just handed you, and really, these are centered around language that is safeguarding the city in terms of creating timeframes for the developer to hit certain milestones in the project. And, and specifically, we were relating, since one of the provisions originally was that the concept plan would be presented and carried through, that's actually occurred already, it went through planning and zoning, so the, the zoning has already been obtained, so now we are really at the level where the resolution from the Planning Commission requires the developer to have their stage two plan, which is their final design site planning, presented to the Planning Commission for consideration, so we related that back into this agreement document in this way. If you look at page eight, is, is the third page in this group of pages, where the, and it's all indicated in red, so these would be the only changes to the total draft that you received in advance, where it refers to the developer, she will close on private financing and obtain the stage two development plan approval for the project within six months of the effective date. So it's basically tying the development plan and the financing together as an obligation of the developer. And shall commence construction by March twenty eighteen. So that is a trigger of an actual onsite, you know, function, where they are actually onsite performing work by that date, and, and Jim, they're in agreement with that based on my conversation with them.
Those, and there's one other provision.
Right, and, and I'll get to that one, and, and I just wanted to add that we added on the first page that you see, when we refer to commence construction, we put a definition of what that means. And it essentially means that they're obligated by contract with a qualified contractor to perform certain construction as described in the approved, again, stage two development plan. For example, some aspect, environmental remediation, infrastructure, building restoration, any or all of the above, that's what we want, is for them to have initiated construction, which means that they're obligated into the project and spending money performing the functions of this agreement. And, and further that the said contractors initiated work on the project site. So, that's, that's the only addition, with the exception of item number on page ten, which is the fourth page in this group. And that item is the city and developer agree that a default of the private financing terms and conditions should be considered a default of the agreement. So that, that language is also placed in there for the same purpose. And then the only item I did not mention is on the last page, again, there's a reference to the stage two development plan as already being in existence, and, and referring to it as the exhibit as an attachment into this contract, so we're really tying the stage two plan into the function of the agreement, so that's the only changes that we have.
Do we have what we need from the school board?
We are still working with the school board, and the school board has not taken final action on an agreement with the city. The language in here, I don't, which part of that I don't have highlighted, let me find it.
I've got it open, mate.
On page nine. The top, very top of page nine, yes. Where it refers to the Fort Thomas School District, in accordance with agreement, taxes be finalized between developer and the city, agreed to by the school district, we'll be basically doing an agreement with the school district, the city. So we haven't finalized those exact terms, so we're continuing that process, and they have agreed that they will have special meeting to make that consideration, but it, that agreement doesn't make any value or substance change to the agreement between the city and the contractor. So we're recommending that we take action tonight on this agreement, and that obviously is a, is a part of the agreement independently.
Question you need. Well, I would like to request, Mayor, this is a contract with a transfer property,
Well, I would like to request, Mayor, this is a contract with a transfer of property. There are a couple of items that might better be discussed in executive session. And so I'd make a motion to go to an executive session to discuss those items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
All right, thank you. You will be going in executive session, and then we'll come back in and finish our agenda. Call the meeting back to order. And do we have to do a roll call again? We don't have to do that, do we, Jim?
To reconvene, no.
Okay, all right. So we are at the topic of consideration of VA development agreement. I will entertain a motion. Do we want to talk more about it?
I think we want to get on record the additional language that was not included in what was submitted.
And Jim said he would just read that into the record and we'll just have it then.
In our addendum page, if you want to follow on that. And Mr. Parsons, if you want to direct him to where we are on that, which page that would occur?
On my version, it's the last, on page eight, right at the last, it'd be an additional sentence to Section A. This will be what we indicated. My clients are agreeable with this, that we'll just add a sentence right at the end that says, "The city shall have the option to declare this agreement void if the developer does not close on the private financing within six months from the day of this agreement." And that's the additional, in addition to the other changes that were referenced.
Okay, sounds good.
So I think that's the only substantive changes from the draft that you all received in advance in the meeting. So I think at this point, staff's recommendation is that we incorporate all those changes, including the one just stated, to be part of the record as the actual development agreement.
I would move to concur.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
So this is an municipal order to approve the agreement yet?
Oh, that's right.
That comes later, right? What are we voting on?
That's a good question. I am sorry, you're right, Ron.
I mean, I think your action could be on the municipal order authorizing the mayor deciding.
Okay, so what?
We're voting... Kim made a motion to concur with the changes that have been made. That's what we're voting.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
Good, we got that over. Okay. All right, Finance Committee report on dispersions.
Report is first, June, just through June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. General Fund, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and four cents. Tower Park Fund, two hundred thirty-two dollars and nine cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, eighteen thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents. CBD Revitalization, eight thousand five hundred... Eight thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Total, one thousand five... One hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants number two-one-one-nine-three-two-two-one-one be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member, Mr. Beasley, present.
Motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Okay, we are down to ordinance's resolution orders. Ordinance oh five, two thousand seventeen.
Ordinance oh five, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance amending the Fort Thomas Police Department Policies and Procedures Manual, O-oh-six, two thousand fourteen, and amended, O-thirteen, two thousand sixteen, by adding policies pertaining to body worn video recorders. Now therefore, it will be ordained by the Board of Council of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, as follows. Section one, the Fort Thomas Police Department Policies and Procedures Manual is hereby amended to include the following new policies attached here too, as Exhibit A, enlisted by title, as follows. Section three, Investigations Manual, Chapter ten, Body Worn Video Recorders. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the earliest date provided by law and following its adoption and publication, as required by law.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
All right, ordinance oh six, two thousand seventeen.
Ordinance O-oh-six, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance amending ordinance O-oh-eight, two thousand sixteen, general fund budget for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the fiscal year seven-one, two thousand sixteen, through six-thirty, two thousand seventeen, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance amends the general fund budget of the city for the fiscal year July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
All right. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
All right, ordinance oh seven, two thousand seventeen.
Ordinance O-oh-seven, two thousand seventeen, an ordinance adopting a general fund budget, municipal road aid fund budget, debt service fund budget, Tower Park Enterprise Fund budget, capital projects CBD fund, and waste disposal fund budget for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the fiscal year seven-one, two thousand seventeen, through six-thirty, two thousand eighteen, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance adopts an annual budget for the city for the fiscal year July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
Okay, skip to municipal order, M-O-oh-six, two thousand seventeen.
Municipal Order, M-O-oh-six, two thousand seventeen, a municipal order appointing Jan Sidenfaden as city attorney for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and fixing her compensation for the fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.